1900 West. The rest of them are catwalks, which is just little walkways from neighborhoods to parks, schools, or from street to street, depending on. Various locations as identified. So just kind of going from A on through I. 5200 South, this is just over here by where Satin and Bride, or Bride and Satin, anyway, little tuxedo shop here. This little triangle space, many years ago, before Riverdale Road really became a state road, 5200 South was the state road. The property owner, looking to redevelop the property, kind of went through it, did a title search, and found out there was still some vagueness that the state might, state and/or city may own this little triangle still, or have interest in. When you look at the site itself, the triangle is where the sign is, there's a little sidewalk and some parking lot. So really, it's been developed as the site, so it only makes sense for the city to vacate their interest. The street is still 60 feet, or the right-of-way will still be 60 feet wide. The engineer, our engineer, has no issues with vacating this small little triangle in order to help the, kind of alleviate the interest the city or state may still have on a road that hasn't been used in a good 30, 40 years as a state road. So this kind of looking from 52 towards 19. So, catwalk-wise, this is where it all started. You've got Roy Junior High, and you've got a catwalk that runs along 2200 West, about, oh, it says 5950, sorry, it's actually 5300 South. This little portion actually used to be a dead-end road. The city, years ago, vacated the portions of the street, leaving a six-foot catwalk. The green, however, is actually on private property as an easement. So if the catwalk in yellow is vacated, then the green, the property owners can take back their land and remove it. So when you look through the pictures of the catwalk, this is, if you, you know, the picture on the right is from the street, and you see a piece of plywood that's already been placed in there. Behind the plywood on the left is kind of how it looks now. And this is just one year of the property owners not main, you know, going in there and maintaining it. Going around the corner, the picture on the left is where that, kind of that private easement catwalk is. And then when you look at the corner of the school, the northwest corner of Roy Junior High, because this used to be where the field was, now the school's there, when you go back to the aerial, the school district's already fenced off that catwalk, so you can't even get to it. I mean, the little packet that I printed for you, after this pit, these pictures, there are three letters, one from Kelly, one from Brooke, actually, two from Kelly, Brooke, and then one from Weaver School District. They wish to vacate this catwalk as well. Because it goes right behind the school, they don't have any access points to the school from this location, and desire for it to be vacated. I believe the property owners are here, there's just a lot of people, so I'm not quite sure there they all are. They're wanting it as well. They'll make mention of reasons, but I know they have found people sleeping back there, graffiti's back there, they would just like to get rid of it. This picture is a safe routes to school that all elementaries and junior highs are required to submit to the city and district. So the first map is kind of this, the whole school boundary at large, and the next one is the school itself. The catwalk, if you, there's a little red dot that says 5300 South, it's just north there. It's not even indicated on the safe walks to school routes, so the school doesn't even view it as a place for kids to use to get to school. The next item, which is C on the agenda, is over by Municipal Elementary. Here's kind of an aerial of that. This is a, off of 2250 West, just south of 5700. When you're looking at it, it's wider than the six feet, this one I believe is 10 feet wide. There's actually a person back there cleaning it up, which is nice. The, I'll kind of explain who, where all, the rest of them came from, of why to look to vacate them. It's fairly maintained. Looking at the aerial, there is a little walkway in the back, a little loop through the school and through the park. So this actually leads to something other than, you know, grass or what have you. Again, looking at the safe routes to school, this one, it's hard to see with the big picture, but when you look at the small one, the catwalk to the north, it's not indicated even on the safe walks, safe routes to school aspect. I've included all D, E, and F as one slide in the aerial, because they all come from the same neighborhood into Sandridge Park, Sandridge Junior High, and the back corner of Roy High. If you look at this picture, the catwalk on the bottom left, there is a private catwalk leading from that one heading west over to 2350 West. It is private, it's, the landowner kind of did it on his own, so we don't have control over that. They could close it at any time they want, but right now, it's been open for, because of that, those landowners have just done that. D is the one going to the park. This one, as you look at it, it's the one on the left, there's an orange cone in the middle of it. The asphalt is actually upheaved, and having, has a tripping hazard. When you get to the end of it, it leads to just a large grass area, there's no trail. E, which is in better shape than D, it does lead to a trail, if you look here, just next to the south, or Sandridge Junior High. However, the property owner to the east of it has taken over more than 50% of the catwalk. They've removed the fence, removed the asphalt, and then concreted, new concrete in the catwalk and on their site. So, I mean, it's already been taken over halfway. About where that shed is, is where it becomes asphalt again, to lead to the walkway. And then the other one, on the other side of 40, 4550 South, which leads to kind of that private one, it's just asphalt, it's rather large, which is nice, but again, leans to nothing but grassy area behind, north of the football field. Again, safe routes to school, the high school doesn't have any, they just assume everybody drives their cars, so they don't, aren't required to have any. And unfortunately, Sandridge Junior High has not submitted any safe routes to get to their school, so of course, the, the catwalks haven't been included. Going on to number G, which is just up there in Halverne, it's a little catwalk in between 2225 West and 2275 West. This one just goes from street to street in between homes, so it doesn't go to a park or to a school. This one is probably in the worst shape, even worse than the one by Roy Junior High. The pictures don't do it justice, it is 100% dirt. At about where you see the fence and the trees, it actually starts going down, so there's a large slope, because there is a topography issue between the two streets. So, whoops, looking up, on the one on the other side is from 2275 looking up. It doesn't look as bad, but again, there is a large slope, 100% dirt. The next one, which is H, it's a little catwalk from the neighborhood to West Park, Park. It's a skinnier one, it is all concrete, well-maintained, but from the aerial, it just leads to the outfield of a baseball diamond. There's no walkway to get to or anything. And the last one, which is a little catwalk leading to Emma Russell, this is the newest one of them all. It is about 10 feet wide, but again, it leads from the street, nice concrete, no weans, nothing intruding into it, but it leads to just a, just a grass. Reason why I bring the grass or trail up is, again, if someone's using ADA to get to those parks, to be nice, the, either the school district or the city need to provide some sort of walkway going from that catwalk to wherever they need to go to. So Municipal Elementary, Sandridge Junior High have those, which is nice. Again, it does help with the, the catwalk and its, and its need, so to speak. The reason for this request is all but the street themselves, itself, the one on Roy Junior High, those two actually have people that want to get rid of it. The letters that you received and emails from Kelly and Brooke, and the school district, just, it has no use, it's lived its life. The rest are from staff, whether it be Parks Department, Public Works, or the Police Department. Speaking with Travis Flint, who is the Parks and Rec Director, Director, and he says, in the 12 years he's been the Director of Parks, they have not maintained it. They don't do snow removal, and Ross said, they don't, they don't go in there and, you know, fix any of the problems. So like, item E, where you had that cone in the way, they have no plans to fix it. So part of it, and the Police Department doesn't like catwalks, because if you have a criminal, someone that's, you know, stolen something, it's an easy way to get out of a neighborhood without being detected. So with that, kind of staff went ahead and started the process to vacate all the, all the catwalks. There are more in the city, but they're not all owned by the city itself. There are some privately owned, some owned by the school districts themselves. So these are the eight that the city owned throughout the city. So staff would recommend approval of all of, vacating all of them, the street and all the catwalks, just for the reasons as mentioned. Any questions?
Any questions from any of the commissioners?
It would just be all.
It would just be all, not just line items, right?
No, it's, it's not an all or nothing. You can say, okay, we like, and I'm just throwing numbers here, you know, letters out, A, B, G, and T. You know, we approve, and the rest, we, you know, recommend denial. You can do it all or nothing, or you can put, you know, pick each line item out and make recommendations for approval, or recommend denial.
And the ones we approve, they'll, that'll be forwarded to the council, or they'll, council will get all of these?
All, all of them will still be forwarded to the council, just with your recommendation of approval or denial.
Okay.
Steve, can you explain what happens to these after assuming the city chooses to vacate them? What happens to them?
Um, there are, in simplistic form, there's a lot of Is to dot and Ts to cross. Any millennials, you may not understand that phrase. But if the city owns them outright, and that's how it was dedicated on the plats, then what happens is the adjoining property owners get the land. They can split it down the middle, or one can take it all. It's usually just given, it's not purchased, it's not paid for. I don't want to, I'll throw it out, but I don't know how much, but the Public Works has even said that they would provide some money for means to remove the concrete and remove and replace the fence. Because it, you know, a lot of them have a lot of concrete and a lot of asphalt, and it would be difficult for a homeowner to take on that, that ability, but, so there would be some money, it's not a, you know, not a huge amount, and I'm spending another department's money now, but...
So Steve, if summer it's kept, then will the city maintain them after that, or do they still stay unmaintained?
That's something the council will have to decide.
Okay.
That's why both Parks and Rec and Public Works are wanting to vacate them, because they just haven't touched them ever.
Okay.
And if we...
But end were bad.
If these are vacated, if the property owners don't want the property, is there anything there, or is that just given to them regardless of whether they...
That, I don't know, I've never experienced that. Jason may have more experience with, just with who he works for, but...
I would defer to an attorney.
Okay.
And to answer that, the simple answer is, I don't really know. Generally, property owners, if you give them free property, are going to take it. If that issue didn't come up, if that issue came up where somebody really didn't want it, then we would figure it out in more depth, but in the, usually when this is done, property owners take it, so...
Any other questions?
All right, so before we open up the, the public hearing, just to kind of set the stage and the rules for the, the meeting, basically, it's coming before the Planning Commission, we're a recommending body, so we'll make a recommendation to the City Council. Whatever actions we take as a planning commission aren't, aren't final, the City Council has the final say on that, and that would be determined at a future council meeting. And now's an opportunity here in just a minute, where you'll have the opportunity to address kind of the, the different situations and things like that, and give us input that you feel is important for us, as we make the decisions and, and decide what to do going forward. With that, when you come forward, come forward in an orderly manner, we'll have you step up to the microphone. We do need you to state your name and your address, and then given the quantity of people that are here, we're going to put a three-minute time limit, just so that we can give everybody a chance to...
About five.
We're doing three.
I would say two.
I can't give my name and address, and...
Not yet, the public...
Yes.
Are they going to tell?
Excuse us, hold up, hold up, hold up, just a minute. Commissioner Bills.
I just wonder, are people going to tell us which catwalk they're addressing? Like, could all the A people go at once, and then the B, so it's not so confusing?
Right.
To me, that makes more sense, so we can hear everything about each catwalk, because it's going to be hard, is that a bad idea?
No.
I'm a teacher, so I'm going to organize all of you.
So, so we'll go alphabetically through there, but when you come forward, we're going to give you three minutes to speak. Like you said, we've got a lot of people, so if 20 people speak, that's still two hours of, of meeting, so we want to be cognizant of that, give everybody a chance to, to speak. When you come forward, if they're saying something, give us just a minute, we're not to the public comment yet. But when we, when you come forward, if it's something that somebody has already said, just quickly state, hey, I agree with what was said there, and then give us some new content, and that will help the meeting flow a little bit longer. And but by stating that you agree with what was said, that will kind of give us an idea of what your, your notes are. The other, the other thing that I would like to ask is, we're going to hold our responses to questions you ask, we'll take notes on that, and then after the public hearing, then we'll go through and address those questions that you have at one time. That'll help the meeting flow a little bit, a little bit better, so...
The audience has to be quiet.
Yeah, and one thing too, is, I know sometimes you may really love what somebody says, or may hate something that somebody says, so don't clap and don't boo, those, those kind of things. And then this room, sometimes the sound is pretty hard to hear, so if we could really be quiet as somebody's speaking, that way we can hear what they have to, to say with us, with that. So, with that, I'll entertain a, a motion.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Good job, Ryan.
Any opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. So with that, we'll go ahead and we'll address item A, so if you have comments on item A, and then once everybody's done with item A, then we'll go on to item, item B. So is there anybody that has a comment on item A?
Good afternoon, my name is Henry DiVerona, I work for the developer on, on this site, and I want to thank you for your time that you dedicate to the city. The first thing I'd like to say is, I don't want to get into a catfight, so I'm, I'm, I'm peace, I love cats, but we're, we're not connected to any catwalks. And so, with that said, we met with the city, the city engineer spoke with our surveyor, the sign that they showed has been there forever, and this would help just clean up the surveys. So, we wish you to understand that. It's more so, so everybody can know what they own, and, and it's been there forever, so, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on item A? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item B.
Hi, my name's Kelly Taylor, I'm at 5308 South, 2200 West. We are the ones that have the property that, that touches on the north and the east side of the catwalk that's probably started all of this, so we appreciate, A, the time you're taking and the process you're following. Steve's been great to work with, it's something we've been trying to discuss for quite a while, seeing the construction with the school and the things that they were doing. So effectively, the catwalk has already been closed, so a discussion of whether to open or close it, it's, it's already closed. With that in mind, our catwalk's a little bit different than some of the others you've seen. Most of them are a visual shot to where you're headed. Ours is one that goes down, and then you have to go the length of the property the other way. So, we ended up boarding it up just to keep people from going in and finding out it was a dead end. We had people climbing fences and getting into yards, at least we put that up. I mean, when we moved there, we were very aware that it was a catwalk. My wife used it going to school, I grew up here in Roy, I've used many of the catwalks that are in discussion today. So, some seem incredibly useful. This one is no longer useful. So, with a couple of things with that, we've already talked as neighbors, Judy, our neighbor behind us, it's, it's her property, if the front part gets vacated, great. Between us and the Mueller's who live next door, we've already talked to them, they would love to take the property. Ours is a little bit different when you look visually, most of them are just a pathway with a fence. This one has about a two-foot by six-inch concrete footing that goes the entire length all the way down, so we appreciate, I guess, being considered as far as, when you talk about a solution to actually close it, because just saying closing it doesn't change what it's doing right now. It's, effectively, it is already closed. So if you do, are looking at ways to actually make that closed and kind of disappear, we would just love to be a part of the discussion on how that would happen, right? I think we're pretty reasonable people and understand that it's a, it's quite an undertaking. At the same time, I think it has served its purpose, so we do appreciate you taking the time to look at it. I guess really for us, is, as you move forward, if that's the choice, and then things do get approved, we would just love to be a part of the solution when it comes to actually, you know, doing whatever needs to be done to actually remove it. So, thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you for your comments. And just so you're aware, if I hold up one finger, that'll be, you have 30 seconds left. If I hold up two fingers, you've got 10 seconds left, and then at three minutes, we'll win the comments. Are there any others on item B?
I do have a comment about...
Could you please step forward to the microphone, so we can...
Yeah, my leg won't work. The only people that have taken care of the catwalk have been Nancy and Kelly, the neighbors. I live at 5299, I'm directly behind Kelly and Nancy. And all we've had, if Kelly hadn't have taken the time to block off the access to that catwalk, they're the only ones that have maintained it, even when it was an open catwalk to get to the school, Roy Junior High, when it was. The district never took the time to clean it up or to keep it clean. There were kids back there always doing illegal activities. Nancy shooed them off, I shooed them off, so it would be nice if they did close it up permanently, and I don't want the property.
All right, thank you.
Final word.
Any other comments on item B?
We get her name and address.
Oh yeah, would you give us your name and address, just so we can have that for the record?
City West, 5299 South, 2150 West.
All right, did you get that, Steve? Okay, awesome, thank you.
One with the swimming pool.
All right, seeing no other comments for item B, let's go ahead and let's move on to item C. And this is the one by Municipal Elementary.
I'm Rebecca O'Keefe, 2388 West, 5650 South, and I'd like to address the catwalk. In general, I think as we look at our city plan, we are looking at increasing safety and awareness and walking and biking and all of those things, and I love that everybody's here to support that you're on the right track with getting us walking and biking safely, so thank you for your hard work on that. This particular catwalk serves a great deal of people in our area. I have grandchildren who walk there every day, whether the school put it on the safe route. They don't often do that when there's not a safety concern, so that's somewhere that kids just are going every single day through that catwalk to get there to Municipal. My husband is in a wheelchair, we go through there at least once a week, or more often, so it's an access off of the busy street, which the sidewalks don't necessarily accommodate wheelchairs. Often, they're blocked by cars, or it's the bump, 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 as they go through that, so it's on a road. So that's a nice, safe place for us to walk. There's a lot of elderly in our area that also use that. With the construction of 5600, it's going to become really busy on 2200. To have children, people walking back and forth from church to school to activities to neighbors, to have that safe passage is really a good thing. I think the city's on the right path, I think we need to maintain and actually improve our catwalks, and maybe put that money that we're looking at in the future into making more of them, making them more accessible, and cleaning them up. It's a great thing for our city. You look at new builds around areas, they're putting these kinds of things in, so that people have a way to walk safely and get around our city and other places, so thank you so much for your time. I hope you really consider keeping ours open.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jody Jones, and I live at 5719 South, 2250 West. I am in the cul-de-sac that is adjacent to that catwalk. We, as a neighborhood, overwhelmingly want to keep this catwalk. We put out a petition that we hung on the fence at the catwalk. I did not solicit anybody, I didn't go door-to-door, I just hung it, and we have over 90 signatures. So, it's adjacent to a school, I probably watch 30 to 50 people walk through that catwalk a day, including myself, who walk regularly at the track. I too have a husband who uses a wheelchair, which our catwalk is accessible, it's ADA accessible, so it doesn't pose any of the problems that, it sounds like some of the other catwalks are having, so we overwhelmingly want to keep our catwalk at 2250 West and 5729, so, and I can give you this if you'd like it, but yeah, we, we want to keep ours, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Kay Brown, I live at 5764 South, 2325 West. I agree with what the ladies have said, but I wanted to express another concern that I have. That property where the cul-de-sac is, was originally owned by the city, and they had equipment there, and they had the greenhouse for the parks, and they decided to move that down west, and they sold that property, divided it into lots for people to build houses, and the city at that time decided it was important to put in that catwalk for access to the elementary school. I'm not sure why the feeling on that has changed. But what does surprise me is that the city made money on selling those lots, they thought it was important to have the catwalk to the park and access to it. The community has put in a walkway around the park for people to use. Why does the city not feel it's important to maintain that? It really surprises me, as property owners, if we don't maintain our property and keep it clean, we receive a letter from the city to clean that up. If we have a vacant lot and the weeds overgrow, the city also sends us a letter and tells us to take those weeds down and clean off that property. So if this is property owned by the city, I'm surprised they feel no obligation in maintaining
Thank you for your comments.
My name is David Doll, I live at 5755 South, 2325 West. I agree... I agree with what these ladies have said. Again, to point out that even though it's not considered a safe route on the school's planning, it is in fact a route that many students use. Also, as I've looked at the presentation here, this is one of the catwalks that opens up, as has been stated, onto a track that is maintained by the city that was put in by volunteers. And it's used regularly, and I would just, if you're considering them line item by line item, I would hardly ask you to consider to keep item C open. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rick Modus. I live at 5723 South, 2250 West. We live just to the northwest, on the northwest side of this catwalk. And we've lived there for 30 years. We've never had any issues with anything to do with the catwalk. I agree with everything that everybody else has said. I probably don't have anything additional to add in that area. But my wife and I have maintained that catwalk all these years. We snowplow it in the wintertime, and we go, and weed whack it in the summertime and clean it up, which I've often wondered why the city hasn't taken care of it. It is an access to a jogging or a walking track. Every morning, I observe children walking down it to school with their parents. The kids congregate behind the school on the west side. They're not out on the street. They're not up along 2200 West, but they're back there where they're safe. And I just feel that closing this would be a real loss to the neighborhood and to the community. And by the way, I'm not interested in the property either. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robert Tilletson. I live at 2336 West, 5650 South. We are in the Brown Scott subdivision. There's two phases to that. And we're just on the south side of the Chateau Park condominiums. My wife and I are both retired, and we do use the catwalk over to the track no less than four times a week, and it's really terrific. I know of many people that do use that, and I completely agree with what's already been said. But as for maintenance, if the folks that live next door and have been maintaining that, I certainly would have no problem also assisting them in maintaining that, keeping the weeds down, and even the snow if necessary. So I just want to say that we do use it. We'd like to keep that open. It's really a beautiful addition to access that, the park and the track. And we really enjoy that very much. So we would hope that you'd consider to keep that catwalk available to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Randy Wilson. I live at 5718 South, 2250 West, Lot 8, South Town Park subdivision. I was somewhat involved in this development back in the day when this was being switched over from city property to a city development to sell outright to the public. And I actually built, I think, five or six of the homes that are in there. I actually offered to buy the whole subdivision at one time. We had some issues with some of the administration at that time. But nevertheless, the best thing that was ever done to that subdivision was the installation of this catwalk. It was the most well-thought-out part of that subdivision of the whole thing. And they fought tooth and nail to make this an absolutely workable pathway. And it's obvious why it was put in there when they didn't need to do it. They actually took Lot 10 and shrunk it and made that a very tough lot to build on because they took the property away. Lot 11, which Mr. Modus has, was actually a pretty big lot, but it was Lot 10 that was the big sacrificer. But nevertheless, I figured a way to put a house on that, and we managed to do it and still get the very, very minimum of a little parking for RV. And we built a nice little wall there, and that happened to be for one of the police officers in the town at the time. Now, the reason why that was included is because, first of all, it was a park, and the park needed some access because it actually vented the whole area of all of those subdivisions north of 5600, in between the tracks and 1900. So there was a big, beautiful opportunity to serve the public with something that was absolutely perfectly designed for that area. They had the opportunity. It was their property, and this is what they decided. I have yet to see any evidence that anybody's actually requested to vacate this. It's actually on the dedicated plat, and all of the homeowners in that will have a say. And I'm pretty sure none of those people are going to sign that opportunity to vacate. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else who wants to speak on item number C? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number D. So this one, let's do D, E, and F.
That's what-
I think we can do all three of those. They're in the same neighborhood.
Oh, I get 15 minutes, right?
Not quite. You get the standard three.
Okay, before you start the clock, I'll give you my name. My name is John Jacks, 2261 West, 4550 South. Before you start the clock, I gave Mr. Parkinson some letters from people that couldn't make the meeting that would like them read, if he could do that.
Here, I can read it on the teacher.
She's a schoolteacher. I'd be glad to have her read them. Huh? I don't know. Do you have glasses?
We are strongly opposed to the closing of the three catwalks mentioned in your letter. We are, they are our walkways to schools, church, et cetera. Exercises would cause more issue, more use of our cars to get to school events. Please reconsider this action. They're at 4539 South, 2300 West.
Yeah, need a mic.
Mary and Jerry Wheeler, 2247 West, 4400 South. We are adamantly opposed to closing any of the three catwalks between our homes and access to the school property. It would be short-sighted to not address the implication of such closure, including but not limited to the additional fuel and subsequent air pollution, as well as the unnecessary safety hazard of our children. This real-life hazard has manifested in the recent police crackdown on speeding on 4400 South, a street that our children would be walking. For this and other reasons, we object to what seems to be a proposal without due consideration to meaningful alternatives and compromise. And the last one was Connie Lassiter, 4532 South, 2250 West. My name is Connie, and I reside, as I had mentioned, my family has lived in this home for 40 years. We have seen several great and wonderful changes in our neighborhood over the years. One of my favorite things about the neighborhood are the catwalks, granting our neighborhood direct access to the high school and towards Valley View Elementary. My kids grew up walking through those catwalks to get to school, and now my grandchildren use them for the exact same reason. We use them daily to go on walks and rides to the high school and junior high. Blocking these walkways would be counterintuitive to the design and flow of our neighborhood and remove one of the greatest assets we have. I stand with many of the neighbors who absolutely and equitably object to the proposal.
Thank you. Okay.
Hey, I'm gonna start your time now. You ready?
Okay, well, let me compliment you all first. I know what a job it is to represent the city on any committee or any assignment, especially the planning committee. And I'm thrilled to see all you people here tonight.
Thank you.
And one other thing, the Pledge of Allegiance. If you have any rabble-rousers that want to take that out of this assembly, call me.
All right, they gotta get through us first, but at least we know we've got some backup.
Okay. I've lived in the subdivision. I was one of the first houses built. Lee K. Hanson, one of the best contractors in the northern Utah area, built every house in there. They're built well. And when he proposed the subdivision, these three paths to the schools, to the playground, to the ball diamonds, to the soccer fields were a must. We all loved the idea. We still do, although they've grown in poor repair. In the time that they were built, 47 years ago, the city has not done one thing to maintain them. Now, you mentioned the cement, Mr. Parkinson, that put there. That doesn't mean he owns that ground. It means he was conscientious enough to improve it for the people that go up that walkway. And as far as it just comes out on the grass, when the pathway comes out on a soccer field, where does the path go? Through the end zone? You know, it's the same thing. There's soccer fields on both ends there. So, you know, paths? No. I would propose that the city gets together with the high school. They've already got a project in the works. On the south side, there's a path that goes all the way through to Tam's Drive, if you know where that is. They're gonna redo it all because it's old asphalt. They're also gonna do work on the field up there that's now a soccer field. They're gonna do whatever the stickball thing is. We get people every weekend, hundreds of people, watching soccer, Little League football, all of the activities that Roy should be happy to promote. We also get, during Roy days, the marathon runners, which I'm not one, come right through there and up the pathway. We love our pathways. We've got a lot of original owners. I'm one of the original owners. I'm getting old, but I'm not giving up yet, so I want to keep it nice. And I think your suggestion ought to be to the city to get in there, put some new asphalt down, and make them nice. We can go another 45 years. You'll all be dead before this comes up again. Well, maybe not you. But I'm not gonna last 50 years. Anyway, one, is that one-
You have 30 seconds left.
30 seconds? That's not 30 seconds.
Well, that's the first warning.
I have other people that would like to speak. A lot of them are original owners. We have some new owners in our neighborhood. It's immediately bonding with these people that are moving in. They're good, solid families. The family across from me that just moved in, they got three little boys that are all gonna go to Valley View, and that's the safest way for them to get to school. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Oh, and by the way, don't ever say you're just a school teacher.
Hi there. I appreciate your time. My name is Steve Hoellin. That's H-O-E-L-L-E-I-N, 4538 South, 2250 West. And now that John's pretty well set at all, I mean, I just back him up. But I am concerned about the fact that, the way he described the trail, that there's a little bump in there that they could trip and fall. Well, after 40 years of it being there, you gotta expect no maintenance is gonna happen. And some of your sidewalks are worse than the bumps in there. I just got through walking it again because I've been there. But rather than rehash all that out, it is a must. We keep them. The reason why is because I am going to speak now for the students. I stood there in the walkway today, talking to the students and telling them that they're gonna close this walkway. You ought to see the look on their face. They thought I was kidding them. I said, "Well, it could happen. What would you do?" Like he said, a lot of the high schools drive, but there's a lot, the big percentage, 80% don't drive. They walk there. And we're talking to an elementary school, a junior high, and a high school. And that is such a shortcut that when there are games going on and things and activities in the park, they'll park in our subdivision, and I have no complaints, and go up through there. And a lot of the handicapped like that, they got access, short access to the stadium, to the park, and they're all always being used. But I'm gonna go back to the students. All of them students, if you look demographically, how are they gonna get up to that high school? Now, maybe we could start driving and pollute the air more, but it'd be a little easier just to keep the walkways going. It's good exercise. They're used seven days a week. Like John said, there's 50 to 60 to 70 people using it every day, plus the students. And that's what you really need to take into consideration. And if you question that, I would take a survey at the school about closing them walkways down and see what the students have to say. I'll end it. You don't have to put your figures up.
All right, I was just about to one. That was two and a half minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Darrell Panero. I live at 4548 South, 2250 West. I'm the one in the picture on E. We're the only ones that maintain that. The other one on the right there, that is our garage right there. And we keep it well-maintained. There is a chunk of asphalt that needs repaired. But we love meeting the families, the kids, everybody that comes through there. Like John and Steve were saying, everybody loves to meet through there, go through there to football games. I kind of hope they keep it, and instead of helping assist getting rid of it, I wish on ours anyway, on E, that they would just consider half of it is concrete, the other half is asphalt. If they could look at maybe just concreting the other half, there would be no maintenance for the city or park. If there's anything growing on either side, it's the property owners that need to deal with that because it's our stuff. That would be a maintenance-free walkway. We haven't had any issues with vagrants, with trash, with kids. I don't think the schools have had any issues as long as we've been there. And yeah, I guess that's all I've got to say. I hope they keep them open. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's London Back. That's B-A-C-K. London, like the city. We bought our home at 4471 South, 2300 West, three years ago now. And that catwalk was a large factor in our decision to purchase that home. My son takes Path D every day to school, has for three years. We planned on him taking that, you know, until he starts driving. And we would really like to see that remain open. I grew up here, but we lived in Las Vegas. And I was actually on the board for the Safe Routes to School Committee in Las Vegas, the West Region, from the time my now 26-year-old son was six years old until he graduated in 2015. I question the information from Safe Routes to School because I know in Las Vegas, our direction was to not put on any public record or map the private access ways to neighborhoods for safety purposes. That doesn't mean that we didn't evaluate them, but we were told to only provide that information for those walkways to those neighborhoods in order to keep them safe and private. So, I do have a question on, you know, that information, if that is excluded on those catwalks for that reason, just having been through that process in the past. I don't know if you're aware, but most of, you know, Zillow or other real estate agents, they now count your walkability score as part of, you know, evaluating neighborhoods. Roy has a walkability score of twenty-eight out of a hundred. And that's one component of the livable neighborhood score. We love that there's the catwalks there. I walk my little niece and nephew through to the park all the time. I do have a disabling genetic condition, and I am sometimes in a walker. And, yeah, they're not ADA compliant, but it is so much better than going the long way around on the sidewalks. I may not be able to make that some days if that was not there. We'd really like to see them remain open and in use. And, you know, if we're talking about funding to help allocate that as a person's property, why not allocate that funds to maintenance? But outside of that, we would be more than happy to volunteer to help maintain, you know, taking out snow, pulling weeds, whatever. If there's a group that does that, I would love to be contacted to volunteer in that endeavor. We'd like to see it remain open.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is William Morgan. I live at twenty-two seventy West, forty-five fifty South. And I've been there for almost a decade now. And during that time, I've raised six children and stepchildren, all of which used those catwalks. And I guarantee you that they are the absolute safest way to those schools. The reason why I purchased my home in the first place was because of the easy access to the schools and to the park. And now that all my children are grown and gone and out of the house, and I'm considering downsizing, selling my home, I think that is a huge factor that other people, other families are gonna be looking at as well. So, it helps with the value of homes in that neighborhood, along with the community aspect of it. I also use those catwalks several times a week. I'm not the only one. I jog, I use the catwalk, I go around, you know, all around the park. I love watching, as a former cross-country runner in high school, I love watching the high school students that use that pathway for their cross-country meets as well. And I agree with what others have said. The money that is gonna be, that could be used to take down fences or move fences or remove concrete can easily be put towards laying down asphalt that is gonna last several years. And you can also add my name to a list of volunteers of maintaining, if the city isn't going to. So, that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Robert Griffey. I live at twenty-three twenty-eight West, forty-six hundred South. Born and raised in Roy. I've been at the property for thirty-three years. I'm a teacher at Sandridge. I've been there for twenty-six years, and I use that, I use the walkway every day to walk to school in the mornings, walk home after school's out. And I was surprised, it caught me by surprise on the child and access routing plan, because I was the one responsible for doing the map. And I had, I submitted a map, so I don't know where it is, but I will find where, because I did it. And that software is not easy to use. There's no training. They just say, "Put it on the map." They don't teach you how to use the software, but I will make sure that it's, I did, I did a map. And it is, the kids use it every day, and I'm walking in the catwalk, and there's kids in the catwalk. They're also using it to get to Valley View. So, and I agree with what has been said. There's been times when I've gone down and pulled weeds out of that, the catwalk and clipped the trumpet vines, and I'd be more than willing to volunteer to do that with anybody else that wants to help me. So, thank you. I would hope that you consider not closing that catwalk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Danielle Webb. My web, I don't know how to talk. My address is forty-five twenty-eight South, twenty-three hundred West. I use F specifically every day to walk my kids to Valley View. So, I didn't know that the other catwalk was private, so that is a little concerning, and I hope they don't ever close it. But it is a very important catwalk to me, because my son, he's adventurous, and I'm afraid that if I have to walk him on forty-four hundred, that there could be an accident. Sorry, I'm trying not to be a mom. But this is a very important catwalk. I know that we use it every day. I know there's at least two to three other families who use it every day as well. It's just a great access. And I know that maintenance is something not fun to have to deal with, but there's obviously enough private citizens who are willing to help do that, that there's no reason to close these catwalks. But I, Becky, come up here and talk if you want to. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you do strongly consider not closing these three catwalks. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dale Quinnlan. I live at twenty-three thirty-one West, forty-four seventy-five South in Roy. And I'm the one that, I liked Lee Hanson's home so well that I bought the home that he built for himself. And at the end of that, he always emphasized how precious those catwalks were. And I'm also a real estate broker, and I found a few of my people, clients, that I took over to him, and he would always rehearse that to them as well. So, he was a fond believer. I did that, I think, in nineteen fifty-seven. So, we've been in the house a long time. He does, did good work. Unfortunately, he did pass on, but he was a good friend and beautiful work. I've used that for quite a few years too. In fact, Rick Potiker and I, we've done twelve marathons. We started out running over there on the high school, going through that walkway up to the track where it made, back then you could get to it. You can't now, but back then you could. And I'll never forget the first time that we had ran forty times around that track. And then that went on to the marathons, all of the other things. My kids all graduated through the high school. Great memories. They still have big parties at our house with fifty grandkids now, great-grandkids. So, and my wife keeps talking about moving, and I said, "I don't think so. I don't think so." I love the house. I love the area. I love the people, and all the people on Tam's Drive that come up there and walk in front of our house. We know them all because we were in the same ward for a long time. And so, we talk to them, and it's just a wonderful place to live, and I love it. And I don't want to go anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name, my name is Rick Potiker, twenty-two seventy-one West, forty-five fifty South. I just have, I would just want you to know, I agree with the positive comments everyone has made, and I too do not want to see those disappear. But my only comment to you is, I'm not sure where it comes from, but you budget for sidewalks. Now, you can call these catwalks whatever you want, but they're sidewalks. The city budgets for sidewalks, hundreds probably miles of sidewalks, and we're talking probably less than a half or three-quarters of a mile total of sidewalks. What's the hangup? Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold your applause.
I'm Vicki Jex. I live at twenty-two sixty-one West, forty-five fifty South. I have a special request. I think the city needs to purchase the private walkway that goes to twenty-three fifty West so that the kids have a safe route and that they do not have to go clear out to forty-four hundred South and walk that way to Valley View and the different areas around there.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Robert Lansford. I live at forty-four twenty-six South, twenty-three hundred West. We've lived in the house since it was built in the seventies, nineteen seventy, actually. The catwalks are an integral part of the neighborhood, and the decision to buy there because of the access to all the schools. My wife fell on Catwalk F a long time ago, broke her arm. You guys have maintained it. They did go in, they cleaned it up, smoothed it out. I believe it was done between the school district and the city. So, you have maintained them in the past. I don't know why you have stopped maintaining them. I'm wondering where all my tax money's going. You guys went through on twenty-two fifty West and did ADA. You got around to the bottom of twenty-three hundred West and quit. So, we have several bumps in the sidewalk that just match the bumps in the pathways. So, as he stated earlier, you know, where's the tax money for the sidewalks going? I agree with everything that everybody's said about them being needed and being part of the value of our property in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Nola Nagel, and I live at forty-four eighty-two South, twenty-two fifty West, the side of one of the walkways. And through the years, I've seen what comes and goes. I haven't seen Roy City coming and doing much maintenance, but I've seen hundreds of kids going to school, going over to practice in the park when they probably would not be allowed if they had to walk around and go on a busy street and go through to play in the park. My children grew up here. Now, I didn't have a problem getting in the park because we have a gate that opens in the back, from our backyard into the Sandridge Park. So, my children didn't need it, but their friends did. And I've seen families walking through. We need close access to the parks. We need safe access. And not that they have to go around. I've driven by many, many parks in many, many countries and cities, and they haven't been used like the Sandridge Park has been used, because I've been there, and people have said, "Do you like all that noise out in the back?" Yes, I do, because it was good, fun noise. And my children, all their friends, came through that walkway. If they hadn't have come through the walkway, they would have been cutting through our yard, which I know, I've had relatives who have lived near the parks, and if they have a gate going through, the kids cut through. We need it, and we need those walkways for the future. I'm getting old. I'm already old. But I'm getting older. But we're, in the neighborhood, there are a lot that we will be gone soon. But do you know who buys up the homes when we older ones pass away? It's the younger ones. There's going to be more school kids, little kids, needing a place to play. And I think it's wonderful that our Sandridge Park has been used as much as it has. And I have been in a position to see that it has been used, and we need those walkways into the schools. That's all.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steven Judd. I live at forty-four sixty-two South, twenty-three hundred West. I just kinda wanna follow up on those comments as well. She was saying that people would cut through her yard. And I grew up in Layton, actually, and I was probably one of those kids that did that in the wintertime. So, I don't know how familiar you guys are with Layton or Northridge High School. Adjacent to that is Quell Cove Apartments. That is where I lived while I was in high school. And during the winter, I could either walk twenty minutes and go all the way around to get to school, or I could just jump the fence. And I got told not to jump the fence, but then there were those days where it was like ten degrees outside. Yeah, I either decided to stay home, or I just decided to jump the fence again. So, I definitely think the walkways are needed. I agree with everything that everybody has said. I use them probably like four or five times a week as well, and I just think that they're great for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure. My name is Steven Johnson. I live at forty-four eighty-nine South, twenty-two fifty West, just across from the catwalk. And I totally agree with everything that's been said today about D, E, and F. When we first started the meeting, before the public comments period started, I got the sense that the, that the planning commission was kinda heading towards the vacating of the, of the catwalks rather than the keeping of the catwalks. I hope all the members of the planning commissioner are listening. It appears to me that they, it's either a supermajority or unanimous in favor of keeping the catwalks. One comment that I'd make about maintenance, it's, I think it's kinda odd that, that the entity that hasn't been maintaining the catwalks is the same entity that's trying to get rid of the catwalks. So, my son, Lincoln, is in junior high at Sandridge. He uses the catwalks every day. And if he were to come to me and say, "I've given up on homework, Dad," after never having actually done homework, I would be very concerned about his logic. So, I think, I think it's important for the city to, to not abdicate the responsibility and to instead maintain the catwalks as, as is what the expectation would be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brett Empy. I live at forty-four sixty-seven South, twenty-three hundred West. My parents moved here over forty years ago, and I was raised, helped raise by many of the people here today. They talk about their kids growing up in this neighborhood. I was one of the kids growing up in this neighborhood. F was for Valley View, D was for Sandridge, and E was for Roy High every day. Whether it was little league baseball, soccer, or church ball, D was the easiest way to get there. As has also been mentioned, I second that, you know, going to high school activities. E was the fastest and easiest way to get there, as well as swimming lessons up at the complex made it much easier to get there. And it isn't just our neighborhood. I wanna extend that a little bit, because twenty-three fifty uses those walkways a lot, whether it's to come see friends in our neighborhood or to get to the schools as well. The other thing I wanna mention, not just getting to the park, but I broke my nose at Sandridge Park. Worst bloody nose I've ever had. My dad had to carry me home through Walkway D, and without that, it would have taken him at least three to four times longer to get me home and get that kind of help for me. So, we still use the walkways every day for exercise and convenience. So, I really hope that you will consider keeping them open. And if you are planning on money for breaking them up, I have a sledgehammer and can help break them up and maintain them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Oliver Whitby. I live in twenty-three ninety-
I live in twenty-three nineteen west, forty-four seventy-five south. We moved here about two years ago and I would just like to say, it has been very nice to have the catwalks. I have been, me and my brother have been a lot more active since we have an easy access to the parks. We also have a dog. It has been very nice to have an easy way to get there. I think I agree with everything that has been said about all of the three catwalks and I strongly advocate that you keep them there. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Ralph Quarles. I live at twenty-three thirty-nine west, forty-four fifty south in Roy, Utah. They dug the hole for our home on January twentieth, nineteen seventy-five. And during that time, I've had children that have gone to the schools that the walkways lead to. I've coached girls softball, boys softball. I've played softball myself, umpired softball in those locations and have never used my car to go to those locations. I've always used the walkways. And I think it's a necessity for the community. People aren't old like I am, but the community is getting smaller, I mean, younger all the time and those walkways are used and will be used for substantial time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to note that we just excused Commissioner Collins. He had a prior engagement at seven fifteen, so it wasn't anything anybody said. We knew we needed to take off, but we still have a quorum, so.
Hello, my name is Nick Payton. I live at twenty-two fifty-eight west, forty-five twenty-five south. I've been there for ten years now and I guess what I want to say is if you guys want to close these, I don't understand why to begin with, why it's even a topic. And second, you're going to push all these kids to go to forty-four hundred, or excuse me, yeah, forty, or yeah, four thousand, whatever, go down and you're going to force them onto twenty-three fifty. I don't know if anybody's drove on twenty-three fifty, but you've got a truck parked in the road half the time with a chain up to a tree sixty feet in the air and everybody just drives by like, "Hey, let's have our kids walk by this." No. Then you think, what's across the street? A dilapidated house that's burnt down not once but twice with seventy-five propane tanks in the front yard, a trailer that looks like it's something out of, I don't know, the Griswolds? And you guys are thinking, hey, let's close these down. Is this really what we're doing here? Go walk around, go see for yourselves, especially if you're from Roy. Like, take the time, be smart about this decision. We don't want it closed, obviously. Figure it out.
Thank you. Please hold your applause. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to items D, E, and F?
Hi, we're Michael and Cindy Ames. We live at twenty-three oh-one west, fifty, forty-five fifty south. I maintain the east side of that catwalk, which would be catwalk F and kind of a little fuzzy on why this has even become an issue if the city ain't using them. We have a handicap boy that uses those and his friends use them. It's imperative, I think, that all the people's voices are heard. I believe it's the same people that elected these officials, their voicing their concerns on this. I do believe it'd be a travesty if they closed them. I think the populace has spoken. I think it's imperative that they're opened for accessibility to those schools. And I think it's pretty fantastic that all these kind residents that live by those catwalks would come out and voice their opinions. And I just hope it holds some weight when they make their decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on items D, E, and F? Should be like an auctioneer going once, going twice. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and we'll move on to item number G. If anybody has any comments on item number G. And the catwalk is up there on the TV screen so you can see which one we're talking about.
I'm Lily Gittens. I live at thirty-nine thirty-five south, twenty-two twenty-five west, right next to the catwalk. I'll make it short and sweet. It's a hill. It's not really safe. It's sand, dirt, and a great big eyesore. I think it needs to be shut down. Thank you.
Thank you. Did we get your address? Okay, perfect.
She lives with us. She's Destiny Gittens.
My name is Destiny Gittens.
Thirty-nine thirty-five south.
Thirty-nine thirty-nine south.
Twenty-two twenty-five west.
Twenty-two twenty-five west.
Okay, tell them what you think.
I think our catwalk should be shut down because my friends, they ride their bikes all down and there's metal poles and traffic. And so they could get special head opens on the metal poles and so you don't really want the metal poles. And they could fall down in the middle of the road. When they slide down. And so when they trip on the road, a car might be coming and they could get hit by a car. And so you don't want that. So I think you should close it.
Thank you and thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Connie Pilkington. I live at thirty-nine forty-six south, twenty-two seventy-five west in Roy, right next to the catwalk that's never been maintained. We live in the land that Roy forgot. Our blocks are long. There's no way for kids to get through there unless they have to walk all the way through. We have no sidewalks. So I think it's important to leave that catwalk open, but have somebody come in and maintain it. It originally had asphalt, which is non-existent now. I have lived in Roy since I was in the third grade in the same house that I'm in now, off and on. I do own that property now. But where we have no sidewalks and no other access for these children, they would have to walk all the way around and then go up four thousand south, which is a real busy street. And we have a lot of new families moving in there. They have young children. That is going to be an important access for that. But all that being said, if that's not maintained and cared for properly, it is a danger to the students. So we need Roy to man up, take care of their property, and make it safe and accessible for those kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Terry Hampton. I live at thirty-nine thirty-two, south twenty-two seventy-five west. My property is the, on the north at the bottom of the path. I've owned that place for thirty-one years. In that thirty-one years, I've seen Roy City come through very seldom. They did come through once this summer in one of their little carts spraying Roundup, which they sprayed out two feet down the side of my grass. Killed grass on my property, killed the weeds for a minute, and that's the only time I've seen them this year. I did not see them at all last year. In my younger years, I took care of that path between my house and Connie's house myself. And Connie and her family would be out there weed eating their side and myself and my family weed eating our side and killing everything in there. Obviously, we can't do that anymore. I went out the other day and dug up a bunch of the goat's heads. It's just sand, so it's total goat heads. If the kids do make a mistake and ride their bike through there, their tires are flat. So I can't maintain it the way that I used to, so it's got a lot of, it's got a lot of stuff in it now. It needs to be paved or turned to asphalt. We do have two people in the neighborhood in electric wheelchairs. If they try to go up it, we end up out there turning them around and helping them back down. So it is not ADA compliant. It is not safe for the children. And if it's left open, it needs to be maintained. If it's not left open, we need help moving fences. We are, neither one of us are young, we're not wealthy, we don't have endless amounts of money. We cannot afford to move those fences on our own. The fire hydrant for the neighborhood is at the end of the catwalk on my property. What happens to that fire hydrant there at the end of the catwalk? That needs to be a consideration as well. What, if we take the catwalk, what can we do with that property? What can I do with that piece of property, with that fire hydrant sitting at the bottom of it on my side? So bottom line, the city just needs to step up, make that path ADA accessible for the handicap and for the children, and make my life easier because I hate those damn goat heads everywhere. I mean, I hate them. They're horrible, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I think the Latin name for the goat's head is Tribulus Terrestus, which is trouble of the earth, which is appropriately named. I don't know, random facts.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Smith. My address is thirty-nine thirty-five south, twenty-two twenty-five west. That's my blue car sitting on the right there. One thing is the little ones, they like to walk through while the older ones like to disrupt the dogs. And we have dogs all over that neighborhood and the kids will walk through the alley, throw things at them, and it's, I don't, I don't think that's okay. Like, it's, there's a lot of kids that use that walkway and the things I've seen them do to dogs going down it, it's not okay. I do want to bring that up to your attention.
So what would be your recommendation to us?
Close it.
Close it.
Yeah.
All right, any more comments on item number G? Okay, let's go ahead and we'll move on to item number H. And this is one by Roy West Park.
Hi, thank you. My name is Tamara Mendenhall, twenty-seven sixty-five west, forty-four fifty south. Roy West Park is my backyard. The catwalk is right next to my home. I love the, I love the walk. I walk it every day to get up to the trail. Many, many people use it. Please, please don't close it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, this is H.
Good evening. My name is Alyssa Buchanan. My address is forty-four thirty, south twenty-eight hundred west. I, I have a concern about the disingenuous description of the pathway. Yes, it does lead just to grass, there is not a path, but it's twenty-five feet or less to the brand-new ramp and path that has been built along the east side of Roy West Park that leads and connects up to the Denver and Rio Grande Bike Trail and Pathway. It is used constantly throughout the year, daily access. I use it daily. Lots of people use it to get access to the park, especially at times like Roy Days and soccer tournaments and the various baseball tournaments. Our neighborhood, ever since the move, moving Roy Days to Roy West Park from the North Park, is completely filled and that is an access for a lot of people to get into Roy Days and into the park. So, yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, my name is Larry Shields. I came here because of the catwalk C, but I was also concerned by the comments made about H, the fact that it only goes to grass, like this lady just said. It's, I've walked that trail, that catwalk many times. Well, I walk my dog on the rail trail, then I use that catwalk to get up. It's like she said, it's twenty-five feet from a brand-new concrete sidewalk and ramp that goes right to the rail trail. I can see no reason at all to not maintain and continue using that catwalk. If anything else, add another strip of concrete and you've got a path all the way through. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you have a comment on item C that you wanted to make? Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure, even though we moved on, I wanted to give you that opportunity if you, you had something. All right, any other comments on item H? All right, with that, we will move on to item I. And this is the catwalk by Emma Russell Park.
Hi there. My name is Colin Delahuntie, that's C-O-L-I-N, last name Delahuntie, D-E-L-A-H-U-N-T-Y. I live at fifty-eight oh-eight, south, forty-one fifty, west. And this, this catwalk actually is adjacent to my property there on, it runs to the west of my property. And for us and for our neighborhood, we have actually a really kind of neat little neighborhood. It's kind of secluded away and everybody in that neighborhood uses this, this catwalk. It's in actually really fine condition. And there was a comment made in the notice saying that the only concern is that it's, is that it's not ADA compliant. But if you look between, similar to the last, to the last catwalk, there's about seventy-five feet between the end of that catwalk and the, and the trail that goes around the circumference of the park. We have, I would say, hundreds of people every week use that catwalk. And if we could take the money that we would have put into pulling the catwalk out into grading and putting asphalt in that connects to the concrete to the asphalt walkway around the park, I don't think it would be terribly expensive and would make it compliant to any other reason. It would make it very convenient to have the asphalt there connecting to the park walkway. In regards to the property itself, I would not be interested in the property and I think that maintaining that catwalk would maintain something that makes this little neighborhood really, really unique and special. And that's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Hello, I'm Greg Sigmiller, forty-one fif, excuse me.
Sorry, Greg.
I live, I live on fifty-nine oh-two, south, forty-one fifty, west. No heckling the audience, so.
Oh, I'm going to heckle you.
I, we, we moved to that house about four years ago. We lived in another house about twenty years before there, just around the corner. One of the reasons why we moved to this house is because we liked the access to the park. And I realize it doesn't go all the way to the trail. I'm a runner and I run that multiple times a week. That's my path and I would really, as much as I love running and jogging, I'd much prefer that shorter path than a longer path and increase my running distance because I just would prefer to see that there. It is kind of quaint, it is kind of secluded right now. When and if forty-one fifty west is ever opened, that, that would become an access for a lot more people. Right now, because forty-one fifty dead ends just off that photo, it is fairly secluded, but it would, it would benefit even more people when and if that road continues through. So it's, it is a benefit to Roy City and I hope that you would, would keep it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Corey Haggard. I live in the cul-de-sac with these two. I'm at fifty-eight eighteen, south, forty-one fifty, west. We have lived there for almost eight years now. I have three little kids and honestly, I can't imagine not having that. I mean, the selfish part of me wants to say, "Take it away" because my kids want to go to the park every single day and it's so accessible. But honestly, it is, it's an amazing thing for our little neighborhood there. It's great to see the community come together. We all stop there, chat. I know we've got several neighbors who have physical disabilities and they use that to get there because the only other way would be going all the way around to forty-three hundred, the road that connects to Clinton City now. And that's basically a highway at this point. There's so much traffic that I think it's dangerous for the children of the community trying to go to Freedom Elementary over there to Hooper. A lot of our elementary age kids live there. I know a lot of them cut through and I think you can even see on that map how much traffic that gets on the grass right there. I mean, the grass is always indented from people walking on it because it's used so much. I would say out of all of the parkways that we looked at, like as you pointed out, this is the newest one. It's in the best condition. We saw a lot of years' use out of it. I think tearing it up would be a disservice to our community and anybody using that park. So I would strongly recommend that we keep it. So I, I would strongly recommend that we keep it as is. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Could you step up to the microphone?
The, the one last thing to add to that is that I know that three of us were able to come tonight, but we kind of are representing the neighborhood. And as we discussed with all the neighborhood there, there was not a single person that was in favor of removing the catwalk. If at all possible, please. I mean, the, the, the neighborhood has spoken for itself that we all want it and we don't want it to go away. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sure. Go ahead and step up to the microphone.
So what happens after you make your recommendation? Will we all get notice again when this goes to the city council and we'll, we'll receive the same letter notifying us that it's going to the city council?
So we'll, we'll make a note of that. And when we're done, there's a few questions that have come up and we will definitely answer that.
Okay. Thank you.
As you make that decision, uh, as a group on that, of course, you know, some I can see you getting rid of them, some of them you'd better keep. Could we get some sort of a idea what you'll do to improve them as well and when?
Yeah, we'll, we'll answer that afterward. Great, great question.
Thank you.
Since we're in the Q and A session here, um, when does this, this committee vote? And is it a, can the public watch the vote? And when, um, I, well, I guess, I guess Stan already asked that question. So just, just when do you guys vote?
Okay, we'll, we'll answer that right after the public hearing, but yes, we can definitely. Any other comments with that? I think a motion is in order.
I move that we close the public comment session.
Have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll second it.
You have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, it passes unanimously. Let's go ahead and address a few of the, the questions that came up. I'll take a few of them and we'll have Steve answer a few of them. As far as when we'll vote, um, that potentially could happen, uh, tonight after, um, we have a little bit of discussion and the question and answer. Everything that we do as a planning commission is a public, uh, vote. So, um, that, that will happen in public, whether that's tonight or another night. Uh, after we make our decision and our recommendation, it's simply that, like I stated at the beginning of the, the meeting, whatever we do here is simply a recommendation to the city council. They, they will have the ultimate and final say on that. That would be done in a public meeting, um, at some point in the, in the future, but that will be public noticed. I'm not sure whether there's a requirement. Steve can answer that part, um, as far as the, the noticing the property owners through a letter. But it would be done in a public, public meeting. All of the votes that the council takes like us is done in a public, public meeting.
Oddly enough, there wasn't a lot of questions until the end, which is different for us. I did write most of everybody's comments down. There were a few names I didn't quite hear, but I got your addresses so I can, uh, get it.
And let me make one comment, Steve, before we turn it over to you. As far as a planning commission, this isn't something that we've, um, had in front of us for a, a long time. It's not something that we've had because we're truly here to, to listen and hear, um, what, what is there. So any thoughts, we have a preconceived notion before we, um, take a vote or came and listened to the public. That, that just simply isn't there. You know, we've read the packets, kind of read it a little bit. I tried to get out. I didn't make it to all of the, the catwalks. But I did try to go out and take a look at them because that's important to me to kind of see what we're, we're voting on. But it is, it is something that we do value the, the input of the public on and, and definitely do listen to that. Steve, go ahead.
You sure?
Sure.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I know there was a comment on, you know, for the individuals at the planning commission to be, you know, hopefully you live in Roy. Just to kind of educate, uh, planning commissioners are citizens of Roy. They can't be a, a citizen of any other city. Now, that doesn't mean Brody and I don't live elsewhere, but we are just staff for them to help them formulate or go through the process and make sure that the things are done correctly. You know, noticing letters and stuff like that. The city council, at least the way the ordinances are written, does not have a public hearing. Everything, all public hearings go to the planning commission, whether it be a rezone, a general plan amendment, an annexation, an ordinance change, a vacation. It sounds odd, but a vacation of a street, an alley or a, a, what have you, a plat. There we go. The way the ordinance is, this body is the one that kind of takes that, that comments. All these comments will be sent to the, the city council. So everything you've mentioned here tonight, along with emails that we've received, the letters, I'll make copies of the, the petition that was signed. That all goes to the, the city council. They ha- so they have your, your comments. So no letter will be sent out again. As far as I know, the next meeting that I can get this on would be October fifth. But I hope I can get all the minutes back, cause I want to give them a full set of minutes. So, um, everybody's comments not abridged by me, but, uh, done in full. So it may be the third week of, of October when it goes back. What you can do is go on the website and just watch the, for the agenda of the council. When you see catwalks come up, find out what date it is. Also on the website, at the bottom of the main page, you can, uh, click on it and have, email sent to you when agendas are posted or when items come up. That way, it's just automatic. You don't have to go back and check. But please, please do. We'll try to, to get notice it, but just know that probably be October fifth or nineteenth, if my, if my math is good. I'm a planner. I don't, I'm not an engineer and can think in my head. As he mentions, they could vote tonight, uh, depending on, on how the planning commission goes. They could approve all of them, deny all of them, approve some of them, deny some of them, or even table the whole thing for another discussion another night. So if that's the case, then it would just be next month, October twelfth, when this body would reconvene to talk about it. So that would just depend on what they do, um, of how it goes. As Ryan had said, this is a public meeting, so all of our meetings are open to watch. They're streamed on, on YouTube if you want to not to leave, but at least watch them. So, yeah.
Very good. A couple of the other questions, I don't have an answer for you. As far as, uh, where's the money for the sidewalks going? Why haven't they been maintained? Those, those are really questions that I would reach out to your city counselors on. As a planning commission, we don't, um, have any say over the budget or, or how many, money is spent, those kind of things. But I highly recommend you reach out to your city counselors, cause I think those are great, great questions on that. And I, I think it'd be valuable for you to, to let them know, um, you know, you have that concern. Okay, I think that's, I think that's all I can see of the, the questions. I think we've, we've answered everything that was, was asked. Is there any discussion among the planning commission?
I've got something. Yeah. To start, I think it would be a great disservice to turn these over, um, all of them, closing them. So I am not in favor of doing a streamlined vote for all of them. I would like to try to break these out individually, voted upon. Some of these, I rode on some of these catwalks as a kid. I grew up in Roy. I went to Sandridge. I've, I've got a lot of memories of some of these catwalks. But, um, I'd like to keep some of them, so.
So with that, I mean, you could say, okay, we recommend approval of and then list which items and recommend denial and list which items. So you can still just make one or two, but list which ones you'd want to deny or which ones you want to approve.
Can we go through each individually so that we can know?
Can do that too.
Yeah.
I have a comment too. Is that okay?
Yeah.
I'm with Jason, like Mr. Holley doesn't remember me, but I've walked to his house from some of these and I look around and there's lots of people I recognize, cause I grew up in these areas. And I do agree that the kids use the catwalks to get to school. Like I walk back and forth to Roy Junior through the one that's no longer there. That one makes sense to me to close. I think that for the general plan, there's been a lot of people not really, what's this walkability of Roy? And I think this adds to the walkability of Roy. So I think it fits nicely with the trail by Roy West and the kind of things that we have talked about as a city to have the shops and all of that. I love to hear, I'm so glad everyone came out. I love to hear that people are out and enjoying our city and being out in the community. That makes my heart happy. I do wonder though, like on the ones that need to be fixed, how does that work if we say we wanted to keep it open or not? I mean, if kids are using it and we keep them open, I do, I agree. I think that, is there a way we can ask the city if they can make it safer?
City council.
Oh, the city council does that? Okay. See, I don't even know. I'm sorry.
That's a good thing to bring up.
I mean, the maintenance and what the city should or should not do are great questions, but. Based on what the city council ultimately decides, then they would instruct staff on, on what to do with, how elaborate or minimal or whatever that, but that's a city council decision much later.
I think we need to come back around on the question, assuming there's one or two of these that we do want to move forward and vacate. What happens to them? What if the adjacent property owners don't want them? I think we kind of have to answer that question before we move forward on a vote to vacate anything, don't we?
Well, B, someone wants it. And G, I know, uh, Public Works has already been in contact with property owners and has worked out who will take what.
Okay.
The rest of them again are just kind of open, but, um, it really comes down to what you guys, your recommendations, and then again, what the city council ultimately approves or denies or.
So you said G, someone would take that one?
Yeah, that's the one that's dirt.
Oh, yeah. The one over by.
Has a hill and.
Okay.
But you have four owners, don't you? You have two on the south, two on the north.
I know, I'm not sure how it was agreed upon, but I've just been told that they've been in contact with them.
Okay.
I have a couple of comments. Number one, I have two takeaways from tonight from the public. And by the way, we do appreciate people coming out and giving us feedback so that we can make better decisions or hopefully make better decisions. The first is, it's already been spoken to by Steve. All the financial decisions belong to the council. We have no budget. We don't have any financial decisions made at all. So if, that's the place to raise those questions. The other was the young lady over on here on the left, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name, that, which stood up and said, hey, if you're a private property owner, you get a letter from the city. If you don't keep your weeds up or your properties run down. And basically her argument was what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I think you ought to tell the city council that.
And the public comment section is closed. Sorry to, sorry to do that, but. Yeah, no, we're, we're, we're good, but yeah, duly noted.
Thank you.
Personally, I think that's a well-said statement, so. Any other? Steve, do you have something?
For me, I, I think of the, the nine items. A, the street. B, the catwalk that is already closed by the school. And G, the one that's, uh, beyond repair is, is probably the three that would, you had more people vocal of, of closing it and vacating it. And then the rest, keeping open. Really comes down.
That's my opinion, is your?
Yeah, I'm, I'm prepared to vote on everything tonight, I think. I, I am.
I'm ready to make a recommendation if everybody is along that same lines.
So let's, let's maybe just do an individual motion on each one.
It's up to you.
I, I think that might be the easiest way to address it.
It's a lot of motions.
Or what's your? I can't make a motion, so.
I think we can do like Steve just said, that's, well, that's, it's my opinion to vote to vacate A, B, and G, and to keep D, C, D, E, F, and H.
So let's do two separate motions there.
And I, wait.
I is the one they want to keep.
I is the one we want to keep.
And I?
I think I.
Keep I.
Wasn't that the last one?
Keep I, yes.
Emma Russell cul-de-sac.
Did you say A, B, G, go?
Let's do two separate motions if we could. That would be my recommendations to chair, the ones to vacate and the, the ones not to.
Okay, that's what I.
Just for clarity.
Yeah, we could do that.
Go ahead again, Jay. So the motion was to keep.
He's gonna restate his motion. Subtitle, I guess. A, B, and G.
Okay, well, hold, hold up. So we have a motion to vacate A, B, and G. Is there any discussion to the motion?
This is where I get in, sorry.
Yeah.
Your motion needs to be a recommendation, so.
I move that, I move that we, planning commission recommends vacation of catwalks. Ex- exposition or whatever. A, B, and G.
So we have a motion to recommend to vacate letters A, B, and G. Is there any discussion to the motion? I would like to make one comment on G. If the council doesn't decide to vacate that one, then I think there's some serious upgrades and, and things that need to be done there. That's, that's the one that I'm not sure about. I'm obviously in the state that it's in. That's a tough one, but it definitely needs some upgrade if it's not, not to be closed. I, I'm fine doing that together because we're recommending to the council to do that and then they can, they can address that issue, so.
I second the motion to recommend.
Any other, just one second. Just, um, any other discussion to the motion?
So you're recommending A, B closed and G gets?
And G closed as well. So all three of those are recommended to be.
But if they don't close it, then you want them to recommend to, you're saying close all three?
That, that's the motion. I can't make a motion, so that was just a discussion on the, the motion.
So hang on. So just kind of as a point of order, when someone seconds a motion, that's the end of discussion. And, and that's fine, so.
We need to vote.
Technically, you either need to vacate your motion and, and bring back up discussion, or you need to vote on the recommendation to vacate A, B, and G.
It was Chris who confused me. I mean.
So just to clarify where we're at. So we have a motion that recommends to vacate A, B, and G. And we currently have a second to that motion. All in favor?
Nope. Roll call.
This would be an ordinance or resolution, so I, I do go do a.
Roll call.
Roll call. So Commissioner Bills?
Aye.
Commissioner Brand?
Aye.
Commissioner Calley?
Aye.
Commissioner Felton?
Aye.
Commissioner Payne?
Aye.
Commissioner Spar?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Right, is there another motion in order?
A move that the planning commission recommend to the city council that we keep catwalks C, D, E, F, H, and I.
Alright, so we have a motion to keep the catwalks that were just mentioned.
I second.
I'll second, oh.
Okay, we have a second from Commissioner Brand and another roll call vote.
Commissioner Spar?
Aye.
Commissioner Payne?
Aye.
Commissioner Felton?
Aye.
Commissioner Calley?
Aye.
Commissioner Brand?
Aye.
Commissioner Bills?
Aye.
It's also passed six to zero. Um, like I said, it'll probably be on the second meeting, the councils, which is the third Tuesday, barring that I get the minutes back before then. If not, it'll be in November. So please, if you have any questions, you got my email and or phone number, just give me a call and I can tell you when it will be on. Exactly.
Alright, so we still have more items of business. You're welcome to stay and, and see what we do for the rest of our, rest of our meeting. We'll move on to item number four, which is to consider a request for the site plan and architectural approval for Sunset Builders located at approximately fifty-eight ninety South, nineteen hundred West. We're still continuing our meeting, so if you have things that you want to discuss with your neighbors and stuff, if you could please step out, we would appreciate. We're still continuing our meeting, so if you have things that you want to discuss with your neighbors and stuff, if you could please step out, we would appreciate that. All right, and is the applicant here for, um, item number four, which is the, um, Sunset Builders? You didn't get told you need glasses like Steve did.
No, Ryan, I was fine till you confused me.
That was my fault.
It's all right. You're great.
All on that one. All right, go ahead and tell us your names and your address and we'll go ahead and let you have your moment here.
My name is Henry De Verona and I'm with the developer, so my address is eleven thirty West, fifteen eighty North in Clinton.
I'm Joseph Cook, uh, with the developer. I live in North Salt Lake, so.
All right, go ahead and tell us about your project.
Well, we presented a forty unit residential complex with thirty-five hundred, thirty-four hundred square feet of commercial. It's the two little homes, uh, next to Lee Schwab. And we came here tonight to hear what you had to say, answer any questions that you might have. We've already got feedback from, uh, your, I guess, uh, city planner and, and your engineer. So we've gotten some feedback, but if you had any questions, we'd like to answer them. We're, we're fine with, um, addressing those issues, uh, that they came up with.
Yeah, could you just give us a brief overview and, uh, maybe show us a little bit of what you got there? And then I still think Steve has some slides that he can, he can show us while.
Well, we, it's, uh, we've already closed on these two lots. Um, we'll be tearing them down and, uh, turning it into something who's much more attractive, I think, to the city. Um, the, uh, parking is in the rear. It'll come through the side and around the back. Um, it's a four story building. It should have an elevator. Uh, it's got commercial, um, units along the front, uh, four, four, I think it's four units along the front or five maybe. Um, uh, every unit will have its own balcony, uh, and, uh, looking out whether it's to the west, uh, to Main Street nineteen hundred or, or to the east towards I fifteen. We've got a little, uh, uh, board here with some of the finishes on the outside of the building that maybe, you know, we would propose. But yeah, we've, we, uh, I think there's a, a really nice market here and, and, and Roy for, uh, something like this. Um, these, um, are definitely affordable to young families that are just, uh, starting out. Um, I think we've got, uh, ones and twos and studios, right? And, um, a mix of ones and twos and studios, so we, uh, definitely will have quite a few, you know, owner occupied units. Um, so for young families that are either maybe moving in for air force duty or, uh, just starting out in life. This will be, yeah, these are condominiums, so they're not apartments. But yeah, these, uh, anyway, um, got a flat roof and, uh, but yeah, that's pretty much it. If you have any other questions or.
Any questions from any of the planning commissioners? All right, Steve, do you want to add anything to the conversation here?
Oh, no, um, no, um, you've, you've seen that he's got, they get a board there and the board that's kind of passed around is the same thing with the little materials that are going around. This is a site plan and architectural approval for these, this property there. Just the two single family homes that are south of Les Schwab, north of the very regional commuting liquor store. So just in and of itself, when you tear down these homes, the whole area is going to change and look and, and feel. As required by ordinance, parking needs, needs to be on the side or the rear, not in the front. So they're, they're doing stuff like that. The, the staff report does have all of the DRC comments, um, engineering, fire, public works, um, building. The ones you really need to focus on are more the, the planning side, but, uh, they all do come into effect to the site plan. The, the building is a four story, um, multi-family, commercial on the bottom, multi-residential on top. The one material we didn't have was more of the metal, but I think everybody knows what corrugated metal looks like and, and feels like. So that, that's kind of one of those that on there, it was a new material that was allowed with this ordinance change, um, to be more aerospace, more modern. Um, rather than just having brick, stucco and, and rock. Um, so it allows for kind of a more modern, modern look to it. Um, as within the, the staff report, um, because there are going to be significant changes to the site plan. Um, again, the, the building, uh, needs to be slid eastward five feet. Uh, the fourth floor has to be slid six feet from the third floor. And then parking stalls, uh, do need to have landscaping islands at the ends and after every eight. Another, so staff feels that there'll be significant changes that it would probably change the look and, and layout. Um, not extreme, but it, enough that, um, in the past, we've had items like this where, uh, because big changes that we would just recommend tabling it and working out those details and bringing it back. I think there's probably some of these items in the DRC that are going to be big enough that will create some change.
I had a question. So we, it being a new ordinance and I think, uh, I think staff, um, may have noticed this at the last minute. It's kind of a curve ball for us tonight, the, um, the six, uh, foot step back on the, on the third, fourth floor. Is that something we can request a, a variance for or something like that? Cause it already does it pretty much, cause when you build a building, you've got load bearing walls that pretty much carry the, the load all the way from the ground floor from the foundation all the way up through the building. And you've got a, generally a central hallway on these buildings. And when that, when you shift the whole building six feet back, none of those walls match up anymore. And so just wondering if that's something that, uh, is a negotiable item that we could maybe, uh, request a, a variance for from city council or something like that. So the hallway can generally continue, sorry, through that, through the main, that's the fourth floor.
You're good. Um, the unfortunate part is no, um, because it is a new ordinance there. You know, what's, what's the hardship of the land and you couldn't abide by the ordinance for a variance? Uh, this is more of a, an aesthetic look versus a land issue. Um, so requesting a variance which would go to in front of a hearing officer, not the city council. The art, the only thing that was new in the staff report that wasn't in the DRC was the setback. I, I failed to put that one on there, but the six foot story thing is required. It's just, it's in the ordinance as, as it's written. Um, you're the, kind of the, the first guinea pig. So you're, you know, kind of flushing some things out that may need to be changed, but that would, you know, still take an ordinance change in order to, to amend that. And, uh, knowing that it took thirteen and a half months to get this ordinance passed, I don't think I'm going to recommend going back and changing it quite quickly. So, I mean, we can look at, you know, how to modify the building to make it work. Uh, I know one of the biggest changes is just the fire department needing twenty-five feet to access the back. And the pillars that are there block his access point, so that in and of itself will change your complete design. Okay. All right. But.
Any comments from the planning commission?
I do like the plan. Looks nice.
Thank you.
Kind of what we want, right, right?
Yeah, I mean, this is the, this is the first one with the new ordinance that's.
Yeah, I like that.
Come in, so it's kind of exciting to see that long process get to this point.
Positive movement forward for me as well, just if we can get those things worked out, then we'd like to see the project.
All right, sounds good.
Do you have any other?
No, I'm just, uh, running, my wheels are turning on how we're going to make.
Cause I, I can see you spinning there, so. All right, we can entertain a motion on that.
You can either table both items in one motion or table them individually, up to you.
I move that we table both items. Uh, with the recommendations from staff.
Okay, we have a motion to table these two items. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Okay.
The, the two items for the, um, that were tabled, the architectural and the site plan, right?
Yeah, they're two, two separate things, so.
All right, thanks so much.
Thank you, thank you for coming in.
Don't forget your board.
Oh, no.
Are these, this is for a different one, right?
Yes. No, that's for this, but it's, those are mine. You can leave them over there.
All right, so we'll move on to item number five, which is to consider a request for site plan and architectural approval for Taylor Musselman located approximately thirty-eight eleven, South Midland Drive.
Oh, wait, maybe it wasn't.
No, it's, it's for this one.
Pass mine around.
Yeah.
Yeah, we saw that.
So you've seen this already, so I'll just lay that there, but.
My name is Taylor Musselman. I'm at fourteen sixty twenty-seventh Street, Ogden. I'll try to make it quick, but a little bit about the project, me and my wife, this is something we've wanted to do for a couple of years now. Um, we really wanted to build it from the ground up, um, have a say in the design and the brand of the building. The idea is to keep it on a really small footprint, which you could see this parcel is really small. You know, Steve made a couple of comments of, uh, the functionality of it, so it was interesting, but it fit what we wanted to, so we kind of jumped into it. And, um, I think the, our architect and, uh, the engineer did a good job on, on fitting it and structuring it really how we want to. So a little bit about the project, um, ultimately it is a cinnamon roll shop, so if you know anything like crumble or, or, uh, twisted sugar, it's that concept, but with cinnamon rolls. It's a scone to be a drive-through only. There's not going to be any walk in access. Um, it will have a lockup door, though. We have partnered with some, if the project goes through, uh, we partnered with a really good pastry chef. She's actually from Roy. Um, she'll manage all the operations sides there, kitchen, um, all of that side of things. So, uh, we've got some good things in place. Um, that's the building and it's kind of the project in a nutshell. Oh, besides cinnamon rolls, I mean, coffee and soda too, so. And the idea, I mean, the real plan between picking that parcel is to piggyback on all of the development that's going on to the, uh, to the south. All that commercial, um, you got all the new multi-housing that's going into Midland Square. All the single family multi down four thousand, so just the function, the flow of traffic. You know, coming from four thousand to Midland or down Midland to Hinckley up to I fifteen, uh, just made it a smart, you know, location for that stop. So that's why we, why we're there and here we are, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Taylor? Steve?
Well, sorry for jumping the gun. I was just excited. I remembered the board and remembered the materials.
We, we got your back.
But I, I, yeah, this is a site plan and architectural approval for a site about approximately thirty-eight eleven, South Midland Drive, just south of the Texaco? Um, so kind of a, an idea right here, it was one of those U dot purchase leftover sites, um, when they widen Midland at this location. Um, Taylor and I have been in, talking about this for months and months, trying to get something to work, um, on this site. And I think we've come to a great conclusion of how to get it to work. It really is unfortunately just a drive-up window in and out and you're gone, which, which is okay. Yes, it would be nice to sometimes have sit-down, but, uh, the site just doesn't lead to it, because parking is the, um, the bugger of it all, so to speak. Um, but the corner will be ma-, uh, beautified tremendously. Right now it's just rock, dirt and weeds. Mike Story loves sending U dot letters of weeds. Please go mow them and, and stuff like that. So landscape wise, it meets the ordinance, uh, setbacks and landscaping and design. And then the building, I think, is very unique and very, um, quaint. But, you know, to be able to fit something in there that's usable in that small site and still be able to, to have a business is great. So, um, there are a few things within the DRC, but none of them are large enough that would change the, the out, the site plan or the materials of the building. In fact, the building has very few comments to it. It, uh, is very nice and architecturally pleasing. So, uh, staff would recommend approval of both site plan and architecture review with the conditions mentioned in the staff report.
I, I'm impressed you could fit it. I drive past that every day and including today, I went by to look at it and. That's, that's a tight spot, so that's, that's impressive.
Yeah, we, I mean, originally looking at it and then I didn't, Steve sent over the setback, so we had a small site that turned into a, a really small site. Twenty-foot setbacks came, but.
That'll clean up that corner quite a bit. That'll be a nice, nice addition there. Any comments from the commission or anybody want to make a motion? This will be two, two separate motions.
I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the site plan and.
There's no recommendation on this one.
I'm sorry. I rec, we recommend the, the site plan, uh, for the Taylor Musselman, uh, project located approximately thirty-eight eleven South on Midland Drive.
So you have a motion to approve the site plan? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, is there another motion in order, or another motion that anybody wants to make?
I move that we approve the architectural review with the state, with the conditions stated in the staff report.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the architectural plan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Have a second. All in favor, aye? Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously as well. Um, all right, so now we are on to.
Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you very much. Thanks for catching that. Number six, which is commissioner's minute. I, I just think it's awesome we had that many people from the, the public. I wish we could get that many for all the, all the things that come before us, but that was.
Sending random letters, just.
Well, why not, right? No, I, I, I love it when the public comes and participates in the process, so, um, I thought, I thought that was great. Um, one thing that I mentioned to Steve and I, I saw an email on is just the training that we need to take as a planning commission. If we could follow up on that and Steve, if there's a way, maybe you could let each of us know.
He did.
What we're.
I know, I haven't done it.
What we're deficient in, but we need to, we need to get that done, so just a.
So the other was that online training with Utah State University and then those who didn't make it to Brody's wonderful presentation on open meeting act, uh, please watch the video and then answer those questions. Send me the answers, please. So I know you watched it all the way through.
Why are you looking at me?
And don't reply all, because then that gives everybody the answers.
There was only a few of you that did not, uh, attend that, so. And as, you know, as you know, you, you are required to have so many hours of, of training and, uh, the USU one is, is mandatory. So please get that, uh, at the end of the year. If we haven't, then I get to have you sit down there and not vote.
And the, the training one, the one through Utah State, it's kind of a self-paced. So if you break that up over a few, it took me about two hours to get through it. Uh, but you can pause in the middle of it at any, any point.
Two hours?
Well, I, as far as like, cause I did it over about four different ti, I had about a half an hour each time to do it, so you kind of start and stop, but. It's nice, because it's self-paced and.
Yeah.
It's good. It's got some good information. Um, that's all I have as far as things that I wanted to address. Any of the planning commissioners have anything that they would like to, to bring up for the commissioner's minute? Steve?
Does that have any people that applied?
Yeah.
We have three people. I did receive a phone call from another gentleman, so I'm waiting for his application and then we'll, I'll sit down with the mayor and kind of go over it. And, um, the applications are for planning commissioners. Uh, we have two vacancies. They're more for alternates. Uh, the way that it works is you have seven voting and two alternates. So say if we had an alternate here and when Chris had to leave, the other one would, would step in, so we always had, uh, the required numbers. I think Claude was the only one on the commission at the time when we dwindled down to even five, because we were losing people and didn't have that alternate, um, aspect to it. So, uh, we do have applications coming, so we'll try to get some people, um, appointed to the, the commission. Um, that was the other thing I forgot to answer is you're appointed, not elected, so.
Yes.
Um, you took my storm on training. Um, if you drive down nineteen hundred West, um, there are multiple buildings under destruction. So the old Firestone Building's being demolished at this time. Uh, Sinclair already removed the gas tanks and the canopies that were in front of it. time. Sinclair already removed the gas tanks and the canopies that were in front of it. They do have demo permits for the building and the So Delicious Building as well. So those will be the first three gone, well, plus the two single-family homes that we just looked at tonight. So changes are coming. The So Delicious and Sinclair are more for the 5,600 South widening along with I-15, but those, you know, it just kind of creates some synergy that things are changing, so. Other than that, we're just hoping for more little projects.
Going some big ones.
Do what?
I'd like to see some big ones, too.
Yeah, well...
Bring your money. Touche.
All right, so with that, I think we're on to item number eight.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.